And there could be one person here, there could be a hundred, five of me. We'll have them the third Wednesday of the month and I'll have them, if nobody's here, that's fine too. I'll still be here in case somebody was to walk up. But, the whole point of this type of meeting, and I don't know if they've ever done it before, or this type of meeting, this is all about where y'all want to take it. The conversations, the format, anything y'all want to talk about is something for me. I know that I did send out some code enforcement letters last week or so, eighty plus, I counted them to date. And so, if you haven't gotten one, you may still get one. There was another twenty that went out this morning. Work with me on that, not against me, that's all I ask you to do. If I was trying to hammer you, I would just send you a ticket. And that's how a lot of code enforcement is done in a big city, you'll see that. They just issue a ticket, they just, they don't, there's no working with the community. It's impersonal, and I'm trying not to do that. I want to send you a letter and say what I see, and let's talk about it. Several have come by and talked about it, so, and I'm working with them on that. That's not something that, you know, they go, well, it says I've got ten days, or... I said, well, I'm not coming by on day eleven and writing you a ticket, that's not what we're doing. So, let's talk about a plan to move forward. And otherwise, we're never going to move forward, right? So, that's the whole point of, you get that letter, you know, some have come in very upset, when they leave, you're shaking your head like, okay, well, this isn't so bad. I said, no, it's not an attack on you personally, but this is about improving our overall city. And so, how do we get there? It's a collective effort, it is not one person doing all the work. So, that's why, you'll see that. You'll start seeing quite a bit more traffic enforcement. My team has a directive to issue, to stop five cars a day, minimum, and right now, they're stopping more than that. And so, in fact, I just, right before I came here, completed us and DWI paperwork for the DPS lab over in Tyler, on one of their DWI stops. So, we're working on changes and policies, you may see that coming about. We're looking at a no insurance policy, enforcing that, and so, we'll see that probably coming forward down the road. So, better go through the parameters to get that approved, and so, what else? Anybody got any questions, concerns, critiques?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I know you said five a day, right?
Yes, ma'am. Five traffic stops.
Yeah, 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 okay, but what I'm, oh...
I didn't say tickets necessarily.
Now, I'm going back to the past, the ones we just had, one two long ago. We got DV police in, they just stopped everybody, Milford people, I mean, just pulling them over. Just to be pulling them over. I mean, you know, we can't, some people got away when he comes to the store, because it's going to get put up. This is going to happen again?
No. So, what, what, the main focus is always going to be the highway. It's going to be thirty-five. And I realize Milford residents use thirty-five, just like I do, and we all do, okay? That's going to be the main focus, and seventy-seven a little bit here, because we're having some commercial traffic, it's pretty heavy. I'm trying to see if I can get a commercial vehicle training and unit, but I'm being told no so far, but I'm, we'll just see how that goes, because I think that the trucks are what bother me more than anything. When I see a truck coming this way, especially, depending on what he's carrying, my first thought is, he's avoiding DOT for a reason. So, why is he not on thirty-five? So, that's why I start wondering. Especially when I see violations on this truck, when I'm just driving in my Jeep down there, and I'm like, something's not right with that truck, this is not right with it, just from, just from seeing it go down the road. There's safety concerns right there. So, those are some of the things I'm looking at on the commercial traffic. And we had to do a school zone down here, we haven't really pressed that one yet, it's early in the school year. But no, I don't, I do not expect y'all to see an increase in citations to you, you may be stopped quite a bit though. I mean, I expect them to be active. I think that makes us safer. If, if a criminal knows that, you know, Milford are going to pull you over, they tend to avoid it, and that makes us all safer. We've had some pretty interesting arrests recently, through those traffic stops, stolen vehicles and things like that, so, that's, that's the point behind making those stops, is, is an overall safety aspect, not just motor safety, but criminality that comes into your city, that's unfettered access to your city. I don't want that to continue, and so, I expect lots of traffic stops. Not necessarily them writing new tickets, but I want them to be seen, I want them to be visible, I want them to stop in traffic, so... You know, they called me, what was it?
This weekend.
Sunday, they made a traffic stop, and it had quite a bit of drugs in the car, a lot of drugs. So, that's what I'm wanting them to see. When they called me and said last week, two weeks ago, we've got a stolen vehicle recovered, blah blah, great, make an arrest on that. This is what I'm wanting to see, you know, get those felons out of here, so, and none of them lived here, so... Well, one of them lived here temporarily. So, that's, that's the point of the traffic stops, is visibility and safety, more than anything. I'm not trying to use it as a tax on the citizens though, so... But thirty-five is, you'll probably see in the spring, I expect to be given, be given a grant for highway enforcement, and I certainly expect it to increase quite a bit on thirty-five, even more so then, across the board. But a lot of will be on thirty-five for that, so that's what you're going to see, you'll see a lot more there. And there probably by late fall or early spring, if and when the grant comes through on that, that request.
What percentage of in-town stops do you make? In speeding or...
I don't know about the, as far as numbers, as far as how many, but I will say, most of their activity has been on thirty-five. A little bit on seventy-seven, because I've talked to them about the commercial traffic, which is a concern to me. It's mainly the trucks, they, trucks have a place, we have a truck stop, it's great, I'm not trying to jerk them around, but what I do want is for them to be safe and, and not drive, use our city as a means to avoid detection and their safety protocols that they're required to meet for text stop. So, that's some of the things I'm looking at, is, I don't want them to feel that, oh, I can just slide through Milford, no one's going to bother me. I don't want that to be the case, so... Especially when I see them going all the way through May Pearl, and they're just driving all the way through, because I'm going home and I'm seeing them, because I live in Midlothian, and I'm like, they're, they're going a long way to avoid thirty-five. I mean, they're going through May Pearl, they're going through these back little FM roads, there's a reason for that. Whether it's they're trafficking drugs, whether it's stolen goods, whether it's just, they're just trying to avoid getting coughing overweight, not being strapped down properly, whatever it is, because those tickets are expensive on them, and they can't afford to be put down, so, they got to pay it if you go. So, that's part of my focus on that, is, you see it in town, it's usually going to be seventy-seven traffic, if it's in town.
We, we experience a lot of speeding on Water Street, we live on Water.
On Water, okay.
West Water, I mean, East Water, and we see a lot of speeding, as well as Cross Main. Has a lot of speeding as well, and I don't know what you can do about enforcement on, on those two streets, but it's a serious...
Is it citizens of Milford that you think are doing it, or you think it's people driving through there?
I think it's residents, residents. And a lot of it, I know we had a lot of cattle trucks that come through on Water Street. I, I think the speed limit is thirty-five through there, I'm not quite sure, but, but they, they come buzzing through there, forty-five miles an hour, and we do have, you know, children, naturally, not our children, my wife and I, but, there's a lot of children live on Water Street as well as Cross Main.
Yes.
And so, that's a couple of your problem areas.
Okay. I'm taking notes, because this is, this is helping me identify problem areas, so that's what I need to know. That's part of why I said, this is for y'all to tell me what it is that we can do better at. That's why I want to hold these, and a lot of times, you know, police departments, especially when you get to a big city, they don't have these things anymore. They don't, you don't even know who your chief is, and when you try to go in and talk to them, there's certain layers of bureaucrats, you got to get to even talk to somebody that's even close to the chief's office. So, I at least want to be level with y'all, you can come by, my Jeep's sitting out there, I'm probably going to be here or around somewhere, so, you can come in, and you don't need an appointment necessarily, now, if I'm in the middle of an appointment with the DA or something, you don't understand, I'm going to have to get back to you. But she's been meeting with me quite a bit the last couple of weeks, so, I've got another meeting coming up in about two weeks, so, we meet quite a bit. So, if it's something like that, I may have to put you off, but I will get back to you. Someone called yesterday about one of the letters, I drove right up to her, and I said, are you there now? She goes, yeah, I said, I'll meet you at your house in ten minutes. Drove out there, and we talked it over, she was fine. I explained to her what I see, because it's mainly from a perspective, you know, and I'm trying to look at it from a perspective of, if I'm someone that wants to come and move to Milford, if I want to, if I'm coming and bringing a business with me, what am I seeing when I drive through? Does that make sense? And so, I'm not necessarily pointing a finger and going, you got to get this done, or whatever, blah blah. Let's talk about why it is it's there, what's, what's the problem? Is it an issue? And she pointed out a couple of issues that were really kind of, you know, she wasn't sure what to do with it, and it involved a little bit of the city a little bit, and so, we explained it all, and what she needed to do, she was happy after that, it was something she could get care of, so... A guy yesterday stopped in and said, I'd like to know exactly what it is you were looking at. And I said, I'll go over there tonight, or today, and he goes, well, I'll come by here at four tomorrow when I get off. He stopped in at four, four fifteen, I said, this is what I saw, and he goes, that's exactly what I thought, and he goes, and you're right, I need to fix that. And I said, take a few days and take care of it, it's not a big deal. But those, when I'm looking at it, it's from a perspective, not from, aha, I got you, you're violating code, or this, that, and the other. It's more of, it's a collective effort to clean the city to a point where we move to a great city, and we don't do that if, if we're in disrepair, if we don't look like we're invested in the city as a community.
Sure.
So, and I, and I agree that, you know, we need to work on our street signs, we need to work on our streets, we need to work on our yards, we need to work on a lot of things, but it's an elephant, it's one bite at a time, so, we're getting there, so... But yeah, that's, that's where it's...
Well, when they get a letter from you, and I know you sent one out, how long do they have to clean it up?
Depends on what the violation is, so, if it's a property maintenance issue, if it's high, you know, tall grass, brush, things like that, typically, that's about ten days, if it's junk vehicles, things like that, that's, you're given more time because of the, it takes more time to get, to fix that, so, you're given thirty days for those. But like I said, like I told them, people that come and talk to me, I'm not going to come in on day eleven or thirty-one and go, oh, there you go, here's your ticket. That's not how it's going to work at all, at all, so...
Well, I know the, the house there on Pecan and Florida, nothing's been done, it's getting worse.
I'm aware of it.
I have another picture that we just, it's horrible.
I'm aware of it, and, you know, as, as an officer, you, you don't want to be unfair, you try to be fair to all and treat everybody the same. That comes real difficult, depending on the level of cooperation you get. Does that make sense? And so, when I've sent a letter, and I've sent a second letter, and we've had some more police action at your house, continues to be a problem, that, that citation may come a little quicker, does that make sense? Because of the, the lack of overall compliance, lack of communication, lack of, of working with me at all, so... And then I have to consider the popularity there, of what we've made, you know, two arrests in other places, and we've had these calls for service, then I've had two letters, and so, it starts, I keep track of all that, so then I can say, you know, we're going to have to move forward with some sort of an action here, but...
Well, you know, the metal fence that they put up in front of the house there, was supposedly to keep those little dogs in.
Right.
They climb, they jump over the fence.
Right.
I saw them jump.
Yep.
And they chase people, and somebody's going to get hurt.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that one, so... If you'll just give me a little more time, I'm, I'm trying to, trying a couple of different tactics there, so...
Good luck.
Well, there, some of them are working, so, it doesn't look like it from your standpoint, but we're getting some conversations now out of that, so... Having talks, conversation, that's progress for me, as opposed to not having any, any communication at all on those violations. We're working on that.
On the tall grass, if you send out the letter and you get no communication, does it get to the point of where the city hires somebody to go in and take care of it?
Uh, yes, it could be, it depends, I mean, so, if it's a situation where, in fact, I was talking to Kim today, the city secretary, about one particular property that's bothering me, and I know that there, we're handling that in a different manner, so, I sent a letter, but there's something else working at the same time, and so, we're going to try to work that angled with inspection and all of that. So, there's some other issues as well, that are more concerning than the grass, so, you know, grass, if it's, if it's a situation like the lady yesterday, she just needs to mow the grass, she says, well, my mower's broken, I said, I understand, yeah, it needs to be mowed, and it's, it's well over, you know, she, she wanted to know what the, what, does the height matter, if it's twelve inches or less, or whatever, and I said, yeah, I said, once you start getting to a foot, the problem is, it's not, I mean, there's a couple of issues, it's harder for you to mow, a woman, you do decide to mow, it's going to take you longer. Number two, it creates and invites issues for other neighbors, so, the, the issues are rodents, snakes, whatever. Things you don't want as a neighbor, you know, and so, but then again, it comes into that pride aspect to me. So, as a city, as a collective city, I don't expect every lawn to be completely manicured and, and whatnot, because I'll, I'll be honest with you, if you're, if the city has to go out there and do it, it's, it's going to be done, and it may not be, you know, completely, you know, edged and curb appeal where some of us would like, but it's at least would be mowed, and that keeps rodent issues down and things like that, so that's kind of the point there. But yeah, it will get to a point where the city would have to step in.
Well, on Cross, they haven't been mowed in at least seven years.
Where you live?
Not on Bogart. Not only are there snakes coming out of the grass, the grass and weeds are taller than I am.
What's the address on it?
One hundred Bogart.
That's the address?
One hundred South. Whenever that grass dries up, if somebody throws a cigarette out there, and catches on fire, they can take my house too.
Right. Okay.
North, um, south, north is the other one.
Okay, I've got it down, I'll look at it. I may have sent a letter out on that one, I have to go back and check my address.
Is the cemetery currently on, on your cruise patrol at night?
Uh, they're supposed to cruise all the city, so...
Because there's, there's activity that goes on at night?
In the cemetery?
In the cemetery, yes, sir. Uh, it's not an every night thing, but it's, after it gets dark, I don't even think they're supposed to be in there. And, but on the weekends, that seems to be a popular spot to hang out as well.
Okay. About what time we talk, like, late evening or early morning?
Late evening, yeah.
What's the cemetery, what they going to do?
I don't know.
That's a question for, that's a question for the officer, guys.
To drive up in the back, a lot of you...
You used to be the one sitting in there.
Huh?
You used to be the one to be sitting up in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was asleep.
Precious memories.
Well, the gate is supposed to be closed.
I thought it was closed at six.
Yeah, I understand, they're, they're, I think they're going to be putting a gate up there, isn't it? And so, that, I'm sure that's going to cut down after that happens, but I don't know when that's going to happen.
And that's going to be for the, the gates coming for the cemetery?
I'm not sure when, but yeah, they're going to fence off along Water Street. Where the gate is now, where you go in the road, they're going to extend that fence further down east. And fence that off. And at some point, the developer for that subdivision's going to put a fence up on the other side.
I don't ask that, if there was going to be some separation, okay, so a fence is going to put up.
And I'm not sure exactly what type of fence or that's going to be, but it should be easier to keep people out at night.
Yeah, definitely.
But until then, it's kind of open for anybody coming out there.
I'll talk to my night guys.
It'd hurt to patrol down there once or twice, just see what's happening.
My wife and I walked through there in the mornings, just about every morning, we'd do a couple rounds, we'd walk, it's about a mile and a quarter all the way around.
Pretty quiet, huh?
Yeah, it's pretty quiet, because we haven't caused an uprising yet, but I, I wanted to mention, even on, on, when they have flags there, you'll see where they, some of the ATV ears, I guess, are, they'll run over the flags, they'll be laying on the ground.
Yeah, they used to break the headstones.
Where are the ATV ears from? I've heard, I've heard this a couple of times.
Here?
Some are here, I'm sure, and, and some may be from some outer areas of the city, I'm really not sure.
Second time I've heard that in a lot of weeks, I'm curious.
Now, if you go out that way.
Following that away.
Yeah, well, kids go out, I don't know, during the day, I know they ride out there, but it'd be grownups at night going that way. A trail of them.
Yeah, that's what I've heard, a trail of adults on our...
Yeah, it'd be adults.
That's what I've heard.
During the day, them kids are, you know, they'll go round down there and come back out, you know, they don't stay, they just ride down there. It'd be, yeah.
Three, four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
I don't know what, what they in the back.
I know one of my officers is one of the ones that reported that to me, so, he saw it, he was asking me, and I'm like, that's strange, so, because it was early, late night. It was a little interesting, because it was a whole line of them. Because I mean, you can only, you know, if you've got a whole bunch of them, you're like, if you stop one, the others aren't going to stop, so you're like, you know, they'll, they'll scatter and they go. In fact, that's what he was telling me, they were scattered when they saw him, something like...
They got to be going in, in field, because they ain't...
Because an ATV can dodge it pretty easily. Sure, aspect of the vehicle.
And then they complain about seventy-seven minute truck, but you in resident, that's a highway right there, but you going down in the resident, because they come down, they'll go, and then come down way up, then they come on she-bass, and then they'll go down Old Brandon Frank Road to wherever they're going. I wonder if they're coming right out there, ain't no road right there.
Chief?
Mm-hmm.
Congratulations, and thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Any suggestions on what residents can do about, all about this thirteen trillion dollar cats that are running around?
Cats. Yeah, dogs, the dogs are supposed to, dogs are supposed to be...
Need a cat to love, cats running off the path, snakes.
Cats are just, yeah, they've just...
They just made them make them up.
Yeah.
They got one tomcat on, on the outside, got fifty girlfriend and all of fifty girlfriends, and they have a kid.
Yeah, that's what I've been told, about a week ago, I had someone stop in and tell me that it was over here.
Quite a few over there.
And I, I don't know what the answer is, because if you, you know, well, she was wanting to get a game warden involved, and I said, well, that's not going to happen, because it's a domestic animal, they don't have jurisdiction, I'm trying to explain that to her, and I said, it's really not going to... He's probably not, she says, he and day, I said, I don't think you really can, he's just not going to tell you that, but I said, well, I'll tell you, you can't really do much. I said, if it was a deer, it's different, you know, I said, but, as I explained to her, you know, if you trap them, because that was one of the solutions, and she goes, I said, well, then what do you do when you trap them? She says, well, we could fix them. And then what? She says, well, then, I'll put them at your back door. I said, and then what? What am I going, what am I going to do with it? So, she goes, I said, because a feral cat is going to go back to his neighborhood, just like a lot of animals, they are going to, you can bring him all the way over here.
The territory.
He's going to go right back to where he knows. You may lose a few crossing seventy-seven, obviously, but not very many, and I said, that's just the nature of an animal like that, I said, but, um, I don't, I don't, I've, I've been thinking about, what is our solution, what is our play on that, and I'm, I'm not sure yet, I'm still debating on...
County doesn't have shelter of sorts.
I haven't found that out to be yet, so I'm still working on that, in fact, I'll get that, I don't know.
I know you, uh, the city, the city cam, they got to pay, or anybody came up there. If you came to the shelter, you got to pay.
Right, but...
And then they bite somebody, and then they go to bed.
She made it clear to me that she could easily trap, she said fifty.
Wow!
What am I going to do with fifty cats sitting at my back door at the station out here? I don't know what I can do with that, I mean, that's, that's great you did that, but what do you want me to do with it? She goes, well, I mean, they're, they need to go, I'm like, yeah, but I don't think, I don't think it's going to work. Just take them somewhere internal, because you wanted to take them somewhere else internal, so I think they're going to come back.
Yeah, yeah.
Is what I'm thinking, I don't think that they will stay gone, or, I think you're still going to have the same problem, and I said, um... I mean, I see more dogs than do cats, I don't know.
Probably no.
Oh, no.
They do the dogs. Most, most dogs are Chinese, they got their dogs, oh, no.
I mean, I see the dogs, I don't see...
Cats are a major, major nuisance, it's, it's nothing for us to have five or six at one time on our property, on our porch, on our furniture, five or six at any given time, day, night, doesn't matter, oh, yeah, they're taking over the city, they are a major nuisance.
They walking on cars, stretching cars.
Yes, and they have no fear either.
At two AM, you can watch cat fights on my porch.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's pretty much every night, something is on porch, like...
Yeah, those cats, they are nuisance.
Now, see, when the wolves come, they don't take the cats, they take the dogs. So, they don't mess with the cats, I don't know why.
Coyotes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they don't kill...
Coyotes sees a dog as competition for a kill.
Yeah, they don't kill no, no, uh, snakes, because folks don't want that food, so they ain't going to mess with the snakes no more. They used to keep them away, they don't no more.
Right.
Because we got ten next door, well, when she put out food for her cat, ten cats show up automatically, and she be trying to shoo them away from the food, but they don't do no good.
Yeah.
It's cats, you got to be careful of cats.
Okay, I will look into what we can do on that, find a solution, and come up with something. I mean, I have to...
Cats and kids.
Find a... A lot of times, there's rescue organizations that can help, and I'll look into that, because they may, they, they a lot of times will do it for free. They come and assist, and they'll use their equipment, the whole bit, I mean, so they can spend, you know, six months a year working on it, they can do some sort of a survey, how they do that, I don't know, that's... How they do that, I don't know, that's, I've seen them do it with birds again, you know, so you've got this many in this neighborhood, or this, you know, years ago, I had a pigeon problem in Arlington, in one area at night, pigeons. And I had to actually enlist that help, and they came out, and they were doing all their little testing and stuff, and found what was creating the, the lure for the pigeons in this one. I mean, literally, it wasn't much bigger than this area we're sitting in, and it was a complete mess, and they were roosting, and so it was, why did they come in here? And it was on the highway, I mean, it wasn't. It wasn't even really in the neighborhood, it was creating a highway uh, distraction issue, so we had to come up with a solution, try to get that, but um, I'll look into that. And we, we were able to get that fixed, so pigeons, but cats, okay.
Chief, we have a cage trap, we'd, we'd give to you if you wanted for your department.
Well, I may be calling you about that, so, uh, I may need, need more than one of them, so.
Yeah, I think you will.
Yeah, so let me look at a shelter organization and see if what we can do on that, so. How many do you think?
Hundred.
Hundred. Hundreds.
Hundreds.
Seriously, it's.
I mean, that's, and, and it's no exaggeration.
Very much so.
Are you bothered, were you?
How are you missing the cats, chief?
I don't know, I mean. I don't know how I'm missing them.
We go, we go, we wake up to them?
Maybe I, well, if they're sleeping on the ground, I don't notice them, I don't see them walking like I do, maybe I see a dog out walking in the yard or whatever.
Go down, go down Old Brandon, you'll see them walking.
Come on, try.
I was over there today.
Elmen First, Elmen First Street, come on.
And West.
And that way, and West.
Well, it's pretty, it's a leash.
That man dog always a loose.
I don't know who dog that is.
That's that man that's sitting in a tree having a glow ring in.
Oh, by the glow ring.
What, what, what street is that black and white dog on?
Carter.
Is it down over here?
Oh, that way.
Okay, cause I got bit by a dog three years ago on, down this, I guess it's Water Street, I didn't know it was the same dog.
No, they just, no, they just moved in. And like I, I told my neighbor, I say, you gotta have a tag, and your dog needs to be on a leash, cause if they bite somebody, they're gonna sue you. So, he got a leash on them, but that weenie dog so fat it came walk. It's a weenie dog, and it's low to ground and fat. Yeah, they mostly keep that in the house, cause she's so fat.
These aren't pits, then.
No, no pits, they just regular old, one's a weenie, I don't know what that black one is, but one's a weenie, and she's so fat, she can barely get up to stir. Go back in the house, but they be at home when they let them out.
You know, dogs aren't real, uh, too bad of an issue, it's the cats.
You just got one dog this man.
One dog.
Yes.
Cats are taking over the city. Yeah, they running them out, they're taking over.
We'll have stray dogs, sometimes there's several of them, and then they kinda could disappear, but I think people are bringing them out on seventy seven.
And dump them, that's how they do it.
That's what they did in South Dallas for a long time, they would do that, and um, they started putting up, Kansas City put up cameras and uh. For a loud noise disturbance, you have, for disturbing the peace, so then you have a complaint, because the first thing that's gonna happen is that person's gonna come to court, I guarantee it. Prosecuted them for it, um.
Yeah, cause we had two big white dogs, I saw one of them.
We do have cameras. And they're gonna say, I have a right to my accuser, and it can't be the cop.
One curled up on the side of the road there, somebody hit it.
Somebody hit that one.
Yeah, somebody hit that one, but I don't know where that other one went off to.
Who's, who's upset? So, um. But if they're stray dogs very long, I imagine the coyotes are gonna tame that herd, I mentioned, and that's gonna occur while we're sleeping usually. That would help, if, if you're, um. If you're willing to, to do that, and.
Signing the citation as a witness or coming in?
Okay. You're giving me a lot of stuff here I gotta work. Or just calling in, calling in a, a call?
Mm-hmm, I told you, be real busy in this long time, busy.
Okay.
That's all you have to do, cause then that gives us, a base, like say, the person at this address, we had, we were dispatched on a, on a nine one call, or whatever, because of loud noise, and.
What else? Is there anything to be done about like patrolling for sound violations, especially like after ten?
Here's our call sheet to go with our ticket.
I know on my street on, on uh, West Avenue, it gets, it gets pretty loud at nighttime.
That's what the judge is gonna want, he's gonna wanna know that there's somebody other than just me, or a cop, you know, they're gonna wanna know that there's somebody else that's upset. Yeah.
Yeah, like normally it's on clockwork, ten, I know it's gonna be.
Is it weekends or every night, or is it?
Uh, every three nights or so, more on the weekends.
And you can remain anonymous?
And you say West Avenue?
On West, yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and people do that, um. More on the weekends or?
More on the weekends, but at night, you know, you can almost count on two as well.
All the time, I mean, they remain, at least I now, I can say, cause I'll say, at this address, there's loud noise, but I will remain anonymous, so I'll have that address, and I have a legit. Yeah, it's a loud noise, um. Call sheet that can go to court, and I can walk in and answer the judge, and you have a basis for that complaint, does that, does that make sense? Yes and no, um. He's got something, he can say, yeah, you were disturbing the peace, because someone called on you, this wasn't a cop just driving a neighborhood picking on you. There was a legitimate call for service, and they acted on that call for service, so, yeah, you are responsible for that. And then, then it would come down to, as an officer, what did you hear, what did you see, how loud was it? Well, I was in the street, two doors down, I could hear the music or whatever. And so, sometimes, you know, I've been in court where they wanted to know the decibel level, I don't have a decibel meter, you know, in my vehicle. But I can tell you just how far away I was when I heard it, and most judges are. They'll comply with that, they'll, 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 they'll accept that as a, depending on the distance.
I have a question about noise, uh, I'm a musician, and I'm, I've been thinking uh, about having a picking in the park event. On maybe Friday or Saturday night, uh, that's where your local musicians, you probably are familiar with that type of uh, event, uh. And sometimes people from other small towns come and, and they sit around, just play guitars and, and jam what they call, and what they call jam. Uh, would I be in violation of the sound ordinance if, if we're out there at the park?
Well.
Picking and renting?
I think it depends on the event, you may need a permit for that, you may need, there may be a time limit, you know, it could be nine PM, it could be whatever. Uh, no later than ten, or whatever, it just would depend on, I'd have to talk to Kim about, is it just gonna be, is it gonna be several, is it, is it gonna be more of a permitted event? Is it gonna be uh, a random event, is it gonna be something that's bland and things like that, so I think those, all those things would have to be uh, played out for me to, to really know if that's gonna be something we would.
But what happens with the neighbors who, who live around the park area?
Well, that's the, that's the beautiful thing about a permit, once you have a permit, you're given, you're granted that ability to play that music to a certain time, um. Years ago, uh, fewer, not that long ago, when I was in Arlington, we had an event at the, the old Rangers Ballpark, outdoor stadium. And Keith Urban and some of the big shops were there to play, well, the storms rolled in, and the permit said they were gonna be, they had to be done playing by eleven PM. Well, the storms ended at about midnight. He cranked up the guitar and started singing, and we didn't do nothing about it, and uh, the reason is because the fans wanted it, the place was packed. And he just says, I'm gonna play, and he played till two thirty in the morning, and the city, you know, looked the other way, because of, there was a five hour storm, that he never, they never, and it was several big name performers. And he just said, I'm gonna do this, the rest of them went home, I'm gonna play for about two hours, and he, he even called us out, the cops, he goes, the cops may make me leave here in a minute, we were all just standing there looking at him. He cranked up, played, and we didn't say nothing to him, we just let it go, because it was the spirit of the law versus the letter of the law. Spirit is, he's playing for his fans, and the people that came out and paid a lot of money to see this, and it was an act of God that kept him from doing it during the time, and we allowed it, but. Uh, in a city park, we may not have, does that make sense?
Yeah, sure.
The totality of letter and spirit of the law, and so we look the other way on that one, but.
Got you.
I had a lot of respect for him for that, cause the rest of them left, and he was the only one that did, and uh, he played for two and a half hours straight. Changes you may see, um, like I said, policy wise, um. No insurance is, is probably gonna be a, uh, a move we're gonna go to hopefully soon, um. I think it's dangerous, um, that unlicensed or, uh, and uninsured motorists out here roaming the streets, because the last three accidents I've been involved in in Dallas, I was working, and. None of them had insurance, I got stuck paying for it, a fourth one in Houston when I was working down there, so, uh, that's very frustrating, and I'm tired of my pocketbook getting hit, I'm sure y'all don't like it either. That's why we all pay higher rates, so, um, I've come up with a policy to try to combat that, um, and we'll see how that plays out. Yeah, bro.
So, chief, to date, how many uh, police officers are service in our community, and what is your projection for that number a year from now?
So, we have three, uh, main purpose with the three, two of them are nights, we cover nights, every night of the week, um. There's a small window of a couple hours we don't, uh, but the rest of the time, it's covered, uh, about ninety five percent of the time, ninety seven percent of the time, we're covering the nights. Days, uh, have an officer assigned, he's covering, basically, he's working a school shift, he's working four pens, Monday through Thursday, I'm here through Friday, so. I would like to get a fourth officer, um, because if I can do that, I can do the same thing on days that I'm doing on midnights, so I can flip flop, they get every other weekend off. And we're working the twelves, and we're covering twelve to twelve and twelve to twelve nights, so that we're, we're backing up each other, uh, that gives us less exposure for Italy to come and work our calls, because I think that's a. In my opinion, that's a impersonal way of handling your business, because they're not gonna, they're not invested in the community, so they're not going to care about the issue, they're, they will just be there to take a report and move on. And I, I've seen that with the reports that have been dropped off to me, then I'm like, okay, well, what about this? Well, I think it's, I'll just take a report. Okay, so you, it's the bare minimum, so, which is fine, uh, but it's better than nothing, but we'll take it from here, and when we have to run away, they can look at it like a hit and run or something like that. So, my goal moving forward, my vision a year from now, I would like to have six officers. Now, I'm hoping for a grant to pay for two of those, uh, we'll see how that plays out, um, and the way grants work is they pay for a certain amount of time. So, a grant will say, chief, here's your two, we'll give you two officers, and we're gonna pay seventy five percent of this for three years, in three years, it's all yours. But we'll cover seventy five percent of salaries and stuff for three years, so that lessens the cost on the front end, um, and then you can, when you have. Four officers gives you coverage, right? Twenty four hour coverage, when you start adding an extra couple of officers. You not only make it safer for the officers, cause now I can add two to those shifts, and they're having backup automatically there, I don't have to, they don't have to wait for an Italy officer, or a trooper, or a county guy to come and help them if they're involved in something. There's two officers working together all the time unless one's off, but most of the time, they're gonna be together, it makes it safer inherently, that's the number one thing for them, um. But it gives you greater opportunity to not rely on another jurisdiction to handle your business. Um, to do that completely would need eight officers, cause you would need four nights, four nights to, to go back and forth, to cover your shifts, and I'm trying to. Go quickly here and explain it, so you would have, every other weekend, they would go off and on, days and nights, so, uh, they flip flop, and they cover during the week. One covers two days, one covers five, the next week it's the opposite, so they're back and forth, but. Eight would be a dream, an absolute dream, um.
You ever consider reserves?
Yes, I have two reserves right now that are talking to me, um, about coming on board, so. In fact, I was looking at that policy about four o'clock today on, what is it that we've done in the past with reserves, and how does that work, and it looks like it's, uh, it's a two day, uh, two eight hour shifts per month. Uh, on maintaining licensing and paying for their, cause part of that is maintaining their training and paying for their training to keep them, um, up to speed on that, so. And then exchange, they work two days a month, and certainly, when everybody goes, oh, well, make them work Saturday night, well, I don't know, you can always do that, uh, cause sometimes I might need you on Saturday, or Sunday, or I might need you on a Friday. So, um, it depends on when they're available and working with their schedules too, so, uh, I wanna explore the, the, the reserve, especially since I've got a couple that are interested, so. Cause I think that would help us, um, on a couple of fronts, uh, it would give us backup, um, on those days, um. You know, when I talk to some of these troopers, and I ask them, I go, where's your backup? Uh, they're in Denny. Been a long fight, if you get in a fight. Take a while, so, um, I don't want that to be our guys when I say, where's your backup, and they go, I have an order, beside Italy, eight miles away. If you got your cardio up, cause that's gonna be a long fight, um, so that, that's what bothers me is the safety aspect of it for them, um. That's why I would like to see us doubling up, especially at night, uh, when they get these drunks and stuff, typically a drunk's gonna fight you, and when you're by yourself on the highway, there's. There's a lot of inherent risks that can happen, and things can go bad really quick for them, I don't like that, so, they got two of them there, uh, there's less likely of that happening, um. So, in a year, I would like to see us at about six officers, um, I would like to put one in the school full time, uh, if we can get to that point, um. You know, we'll see, um. The, the vision I have for this place five, six years from now, as far as the police department, is very different than today.
Good.
It's one where you pick up the phone, you know that Italy's not showing up to your door, it's gonna be a Milford officer, and they'll be right there, that's my goal, is that's gonna be available to you. So, then later.
Well, Italy can't patrol Italy, cause they done had two murders over there, they didn't start, so they can't even patrol Italy.
Well.
Most of, I call, most of what we see on sheet every month, is Milford backing up Italy, and not Italy.
We're doing about twenty calls a month, we're in Italy right now, my guys are, and they have more than three times the officers.
Yeah, they got seven calls, eight calls.
Somebody riddled me that, I, I can't understand it, I've actually had a conversation with the chief about that, uh, and I asked him, I said, so. It was after the Fourth of July, and we had, had all three of the officers here, they were working, and I knew they were to have issues in Italy, and I said, do not all three of you go up there. Two of you can go, if it's bad, but one needs to stay back in Milford, at a minimum, and so, I said, short of it being an officer involved shooting, I don't want you just running up there. Uh, two of you can kinda help patrol a little bit, but come back here until they need you, and I said, you, you belong here, and this is our commitment, and so. But when I told the chief, you know, I said, you know, we should be working a lot of calls in your city, he goes, we worked some in yours too. Want to compare your numbers? I don't know, we'll see how it goes, we have a top sense. Happens.
Happens.
It happens.
It does.
It'd work out.
Yeah, it'd work out, so, um, I have a plan for that, actually, I don't wanna go into it, but I have a, I have a plan for what I'd like to see in about a year or so. And it, it would be very different for Italy than it would be for us, so, it would benefit us, and uh, that's where my commitment's at, and that's where it's gonna.
Most of, I call most of, what we see on sheet every month, it's Milford bagging up Italy.
We're doing about twenty calls a month, we're in Italy right now, my guys are, and they have more than three times the officers.
Yeah, yeah, they got seven cars, eight cars.
Somebody riddle me that, I I can't understand it, I've actually had a conversation with the chief about that, uh. And I asked him, I said, so, it was after the Fourth of July and we had, I had all three of the officers here, they were working. I knew they would have issues in Italy, and I said, do not all three of you go up there. Two of you can go, if it's bad, but one needs to stay back in Milford at a minimum. And so, I said, short of it being an officer involved shooting, I don't want you just running up there. Uh, two of you can kinda help patrol a little bit, but come back here until they need you, and I said, you you belong here and this is our commitment. And so, um, but when I told the chief, you know, I said, you know, we should be working a lot of calls in your city. He goes, we work some in yours too. Wanna compare your numbers? We'll see how it goes, we haven't talked since. Happens.
Happens.
It happens.
It does.
It'll work out.
Yeah, it'll work out, so, um, I have a plan for that actually, I don't wanna go into it, but I have a. I have a plan for what I'd like to see in about a year from now. And it it would be very different for Italy than it would be for us, so it would benefit us. And uh that's where my commitment's at, and that's where it's gonna remain, so, um. You're right, it's it's, there's a lot of Italy calls in there. And that's why I put those on there, so that y'all see that, I I wanna report that so that you know that. The last thing I wanna do is refuse to help another officer in another city when they're calling for help, absolutely, we're gonna go help you. But, um. When you're in a department three times our size and you don't have anybody on duty for a couple of days. I'm kinda critical of that. Kinda critical, um. Managing that manpower. And it's, it's a delicate issue because it's, it's not my role. But if you're using my manpower, then I should have a say in and a criticism of that. Question, and that's what I did. I've been invited back, so.
Probably won't.
We'll see.
And there's not an officer on duty here, is the county in the area or do we just have to rely on Italy?
So sometimes the county is, uh, in fact, uh, about two weeks ago, uh, we had a wreck over here. And uh my officer was um coming in late that day because of my commitment. And I was on duty and I went over and took care of the accident, well, county guy was standing there when I got there, uh, I'm like, I gotta get out of here. So he was already, he'd beaten you to the sink, so it just happened to be close by, I was leaving from here. It was over by the road ranger, so it wasn't very far away, obviously, so.
We don't ask to have them here at certain times, they just, if they're in the area?
Yeah, so they have to cover the whole county and I know that when I've talked to Sheriff Norman, um, they, um. Depends on the shift, obviously, but he doesn't have, if they get sent to, you know. Mayboro or whatever, somewhere over in that area, they may not be as close. And so it's kinda like a trooper, they're, they have such a large area, they have the, you know, Ellis County's so large and there may only be. Four to six of them on duty at a time, if you send two of them to a wreck and two over here to a domestic. Now you only have one or two left trying to cover an entire county, it just kinda depends on where they have floated to, i- if that makes sense. And so that's, that's always a concern, but um that's why I would prefer to have us doubling up. Down the road because of the safety aspect and the service aspect, when you pick up the phone, you know what you're gonna get, you're gonna get it pretty quick.
Yeah, cuz I think county just come right through and then go on back.
Yeah.
I saw one Sunday added to race, uh, whatever, roadrunner, whatever it is out there.
Yeah, when I've had to review, like, we get an open records request from an attorney looking at a traffic stop, one of my guys made. And I'm in there reviewing it and downloading it for the, to the attorney. Uh, there'd usually be another officer that comes up, cuz let's say it was a, an arrest or uh heated situation where they called for backup. And I always like to see, who was the backup that arrived, I kinda keep score on that, um. Lot of times, it's, it's Ellis County, it's not necessarily Italy.
They can't back up, they ain't there.
So I've seen Ellis County on several of our traffic stops backing my guys up, uh, more so than Italy, it seems like. But at least the ones I've looked at, um. And one was a trooper on on thirty five, it was a trooper one night, he was backing up. I actually had three out there, it was a trooper and two of my guys, so, they were trained. So we had two there, but it was getting pretty heated, throw a guy in, make an arrest and the trooper. I mean, he was asking for backup, he says, I'm out, well, I mean, he was that quick, he was already there, so he was pulling up. So just kinda, you never know. Where the officer is. That's your backup, but I don't like knowing that if I'm working by myself. My backup is Italy necessarily, it could be closer, but I won't know that until I call for help. I don't like that, um, I'd like it to be a little more responsive just for the safety of it, but.
When uh, when the Ellis County Sheriff's Department writes a citation, we see him here on seventy seven making stops for speeding violations. Does that income go from that citation, come to Milfords, Coffers, or or to the counties?
No, I'm sure it was the county. Cuz our guys will write a ticket every now and then in Italy, um. They used to write a ticket in Italy. I've given a directive, I really don't like that, because Italy gets that, we don't get that. And it's a real pain for us to get that information and that. That affidavit, that citation affidavit to Italy, we're doing a lot of work.
Yeah, we're not getting paid for it.
For nothing, and so, um, and I told him, I said, you know, if you're gonna do that, they they better have earned it. That's my term I like to use, they they gotta earn it. I mean, if you're going to a domestic, you got a lot of kicking on it or something, that's fine, I mean, we just gotta do the understanding now. But if they're doing dominance at seventy seven, I think, I'll take it, you know, I get it. But if it's just for a minor registration violation or something, why are we writing that ticket and doing that work uh to benefit? It's it's, that's not a safety issue aspect really, that was just more of a ticket. And probably they got upset or something happened that resulted in that traffic stop, but. Uh, I've given a directive that I prefer those to be warnings, uh, when they do that, unless they earn it, so. And they've responded with that, cuz I know I'm talking with Kim and Abigail about the court, that's been an issue. Because when they try to come to court, the people are coming here, we actually had one guy show up a couple of weeks ago, he drove here uh from. Austin and um because he was given a citation from a Milford officer for an Italy offense. And we had to send him to Italy and then they said, well, we don't have the, so he was going back and forth, he drove up here to take care of something. And it was a wasted trip for him and I, I didn't like that, uh. He doesn't live here, but he still do our respect and should have handled that better instead of him having to drive back and forth. And so that's why I talked to Kim and I talked to the officers and I said, you know, why, why did we write this ticket, what, what did, what did he do? And they're like, well, it was this minor violation, I said, we're not writing minor violations out of city anymore. I said, that that doesn't benefit us, that's in fact, we've spent a lot of time with this man here and he's spent a lot of time. And we benefit zero and all the fines go to Italy anyway on that, so I said, I I really like this and stop that, I gave that directive, so. You shouldn't see much of that anymore. But yeah, they write the ticket, it's pretty much gonna go to the county or, um, unless it's a city officer that will go to that city. Like if the troopers write somebody on seventy seven, it's gonna go to the state, you know, we're not gonna see that. Any other questions? So like I said, these will be done every third Wednesday, um. They could go an hour, they could go three hours, it doesn't matter, I mean, this is what y'all want as far as y'all drive it. If it's, if we're gonna be here all night, uh, let's be here all night, let's, for something that we need to discuss and and. You get it right, we'll get it right, um, but this is an opportunity for you to get to know me. If you can't wait for a meeting, by all means, stop in and see me, I'm here, uh, you know, don't stop in. Friday, Monday or Tuesday, I won't be here, but, um, I'll be out of town, but take a couple of days. Been told I need to celebrate my thirty-fifth wedding anniversary.
I wish you'd do that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We'll see.
You should, if you want to see thirty six.
She said, you know, you haven't made it to thirty six yet, so, uh, she planned a trip, so we'll, um. It's actually a pretty nice trip, so, uh, it's not one you would do very often, so.
Good for you.
And go to Ireland for a couple of days. So I'll fly over Thursday night late, tomorrow night and, um. The time messes me up though, if you land, like, it's weird. So, you know, we'll be back on Tuesday.
Which one of y'all has an Irish, Irish heritage?
What's that?
You say Ireland? Do you have an Irish heritage?
That's what they tell me, um, I don't know, uh, that's where I've, they've been told that's where I came from, but.
You look like you might have a little.
I don't know, uh, I didn't know, I've been there once, only for like a day and a half, two days, uh, six or seven years ago, we were. Taking a cruise or something and I, we were just there for a short amount of time and I really liked it and I'd like to go back. And we were supposed to do it COVID yet, we didn't get to go back. So she's like, let's just go over just for a couple of days, I'm like, okay.
Well, enjoy.
She's a planner, so she planned it and I just have to show up. I don't even know what I'm wearing, cuz she'll, she'll pack that too, so, uh, I'll know when I get there.
Yeah, you do.
That's the way it is, so.
Well, enjoy.
But yeah, so if you stop in Friday, Monday or Tuesday, I won't be there, but, uh, I'm usually there, if that's you sitting out there, I'll be here. Any other questions coming?
Got the first one, it's behind you.
First one's behind?
It's behind you, okay, good job.
So, I wasn't sure what to expect, but I thank y'all for coming and uh, thank you for your questions and I will get this with that.